I call the order of the committee to hold meeting Monday, April 4th, 2016, 7:00 PM. Please call all. Here? Here? There? Here?
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 Thank you very much. First up, Sheriff and Keegan.
Alright, we're here to talk about the CRA again. Anyways, I don't need my mask. Go. A couple of clarification. When I went back and looked at the orders that we drafted, he didn't say we would look at the map by annual. So I assume that's every other year we can correct. Okay. So, that's okay. Everybody needs a map there, because I have one. So, we, right now, the purpose is supposed to be every other year we're looking at. So, it's that in mind, because that's a lot. So, as things change and evolve, which not, not that quickly usually, there's lots and development, you know, so we'll need to look at this quite often if we want to. I think we do need to put a trigger somewhere, somehow, we have to be reminded maybe very bad. January 1st, every other year, put it on the agenda, and that way it's on the agenda, period. First point. Second point, what pieces of property or development areas or projects we have are we going to exclude? Because we've got the option to do that. And what's the timeframe? Do you have to do that now? Well, so CRA, this, this is a brand new CRA, so we are developing it. We have two winters in place, they're already set, and they're run by Eric. So this is our new CRA, where we get places and terms right now. We wanted to change it every other, every five years, but so we're making the terms. And then we'll get it pre-reading, you know, all that just stuff. So it'd be a lot for us to do this task, and people to actually start doing it. So we need to decide what areas we want to, maybe in this way it's to exclude, not even though we go over, you know, a whole city CRA. So at this point, we've all discussed, and I think agree, and disagree if you'd like, the hope of the government authority, that we're going to exclude all of Monticello at this point. In maybe six, eight, 10 years, we can read monticello.online, so it's also going to be, you know, opportunities. Sanctuary, same thing, we exclude all phases of the sanctuary, and in 10 years, maybe we're going to put them back in Summit Street, if we all, majority of those are great, the seven homes on Summit Street we would like to leave out. The main reason is CRA is meant, in my eyes, is not meant to be built. And those seven homes, obviously, are new buildings. Doug, who should honestly CRA review committee, you know, I looked at the homes that, and the properties that are in the, in the process right now, and they're all very bio-grade projects. I don't think building a brand-new home on a chunk of lots. So I know we have several scattered lots around the city, and I kind of told that, I'm going to tell it to you guys. I think it'd be very hard to exclude segment, you know, separated lots. We don't want to, because that would help value that a property in the neighborhood. I think seven was a big chunk. You know, you all disagree with me, but I don't think it affects the value of the property. I just thought it was beautiful the way it was, and very similar, that it's been cut up into seven, I wish it would be, you know, me too. So I would like to exclude Summit Street or Summit Place. And then the other one that we probably should discuss is Waterside. It is definitely a brand-new development, whether it's commercial and/or potentially, unfortunately, apartments at some point, because we don't own the property. It may come back, you know, it's obviously a new build, it's obviously, you know, that's not a blighted area, and doesn't necessarily need help to get it built. I think, you know, we would have, I wrote in there for that, so we've done our due diligence on that property. So I would like to exclude Waterside. Somebody brought up Arrowhead. I'm not ready to exclude Arrowhead. I am the one who is hoping and praying it stays the course forever and ever. And I think the fact that we're already looking at everything in two years gives us, we don't need to look at Arrowhead right now. So that's my feeling, that's what you heard. And I don't know any other big spots that we'd like to exclude, so I'll open it up. I think we have to use your minds, as far as I know, with down to $2,500 limit, you know, a few $2,500 reward, you can apply for a CRA, realizing that it may not even make the value of your home, it probably, that is what it is. But I do believe we need to enforce the 1% filing fee, but I do believe we can give our director the opportunity to not enforce that filing fee, if it does actually cost more than the profit, like we've had a couple in here. You know, it doesn't make any sense, if a business is going to redo a huge chunk, and it ends up costing more just to file and be able to charge it. So I think that can be on a basis-based, or case-in-case basis, and we can put that in the legislation. So, go ahead, Doug.
Yeah, I think it's well said, Marshall, and Houston, and my thoughts exactly, especially Waterside. I think this is a great tool that we can use, and Eric can use, in existing neighborhoods, mostly for single-family renovations of existing older structures, and renovations of existing apartment complexes that maybe reach a 30, 40-year life. And I think Eric said that earlier, I can agree with that. And if our tool is to redefine the community reinvestment area, and if that's our tool to, to make this a better CRA for the entire city, then I'm all for using it till as best we can in that discussion. I think we need to look at some other things, too. And I don't know if Eric had a chance to review this, but when we were at our meeting, remember, Park Street and I were there, we talked about, I brought up, when you say property tax, does that affect some of our lives? Does that affect our road life? Does that affect our EMS life? Does that affect our, our love, is, you may already, not raising rent for everyone to want to add to, or exclude property tax? Besides the school, because I think that's important, because I think we have to look at what we're going to do in the future, as far as how this sets up. And while it can be a win, short-term, it might be a loss, long-term, depending on how the revenue streams are coming back. When you're looking at 12 years, 10 years, 15 years, those are long years. I'm more of the opinion, the longer the government to revisit things, maybe after maybe two or three years, because you can get away from it. We should all have great intentions as far as how things are set up with a process. And we can discuss it here on the floor of council, I think you did a great job of passing it. But we can't bring it back, and I see this all the time with, with CEDAs, in different areas of the state. I think it's good that we can come back and review it. If this is our tool, Eric will define, hopefully we can review some of the other criteria that's evolved at some point also. So that's, so I appreciate everything you said, I'm all for, especially Waterside, and some of the other prominent areas in town that don't need to develop as much as some of the older neighborhood infrastructure we badly need to renovate.
And Mark, I know you sat up for the school board, so what can you update on that? Or not the board, please.
Well, I accompanied Eric today, we met with the superintendent, their business people, and their treasurer. And good questions, we explained, Eric explained the whole thing to them, you know, went down. They asked some questions on some things that we brought up that we might want to consider. First of all, and we went through the, basically what you said there about exclusions. And, you know, some of these empty lots, though, what, what control do we have on these empty lots? Can we change percentage and terms? Are we able to do that for those empty lots? I had to find that out, I didn't know at the time.
But...
Eric, you have any more information on that? Those empty lots, changing terms or percentage, because you were going to check in on that sometime.
I don't think we have time.
Okay, well, we can do that in the future, we got plenty.
Well, we, I did have a chat with the law director at the meeting today, and that might be possible. So we're going to take a look at that, as far as the home rule and charter, charter of city, but we're going to take a look at that. So I think it's too early to give a definitive answer.
And so that means we'll get, we'll start reading, and we can then, you know, we'll ask, or we'll read.
And we're in no hurry for this, right? There's no hurry for anything.
What were you hoping for, or what were you trying to...
Well, like, instead of giving 100% for an empty lot, to build something, they get nothing, how about 50%? How about maybe, instead of 16 years, let's make it eight years? I mean, people are still going to build there, that's not going to make the difference whether they build in a lot, or you make it 15 years, 100%. And I'm, for one, not to give away anything if you don't have to, especially in the economy that's going on right now. That's why I'm really happy when you said two years, every other year, that is a good thing. The other thing that we kind of brought up, and I mentioned it last week somewhat, about some of the houses being torn down. Or let's say you tear a house down, and you put a new one up, is that now a new home? They can get 100%? Or is that a, so we need to look at that. I mean, we don't want people tearing homes down and then getting 100% off the thing they put in it. Because I think we're at the verge here now, we've got some big lots with, with small homes on, and people can easily come in and start doing that, you know, when, when things start moving pretty well. Yes, Eric, you have something?
Just wanted to say that one of the things we discussed in the meeting, that's brought up, the school administration, is that if, if you buy a house, and you're paying for the land, basically, because your intent is to demo the house and build a new one, what a developer will do is, they're going, when the house is demoed, they're going to call the auditor, and they're going to zero out the improvements on your land. And, or the auditor's going to do that, and they pick up our demolition permit, because we send it down to the auditor. So that's a function and a duty of the auditor's office, and I don't know that we have anything to say about that. So if somebody buys a house with the intention of demoing and building a new one in the neighborhood, it may, the improvements on that property may get zeroed out. So which would, in fact, mean the assumption bigger, they build a new house.
So they're not being concerned? I mean, if they're getting 100% for 15 years, but someone tears a house for 100, but it's another guy got, you know, both for the school and us, of course. So it's something, you know, that we need to maybe look a little bit more into. Yeah, I think they were, as, as we talked about it, they understood, you know, I mean, and I think there was some confusion. I don't know what happened at the last school board, but I think people thought that we were giving away everything. And in fact, we're, you're only, just not increasing the value of it, you're still getting the same issue. The school's not losing anything that they have now, nothing. So they want, they're really concerned, and people think that they're, because of some things that were said over there, that, no, they're not losing nothing, they're, they're being as good as they are now, and if the value of the homes around any of the properties increase, then they're going to get even more down the road. And I think they're, they're happy that, because we talked about how long, how often did we look at this? And now that you said every two years, I think that was one of the things that they, or the shorter period of time, the better, to see how this thing's working, because they're going to be looking at that piece and stuff here. You know, every little thing to them is very important, I know, I've been, been there. So I think those were just a few things that they made. Eric, anything else that I'm leaving out at the meeting?
Nope.
It was a good meeting, Eric explained a lot of the stuff, good feedback. That's all I have. Gentlemen?
I think it'd be helpful, and I'm happy to help run the numbers, to maybe give a couple of examples of, a couple of scenarios you mentioned. Because again, I think there's been a lot of incorrect information out there, associated with, you know, if you do a CRA, you're not getting any access at all, that was patently false. Again, school was thinking, they're collecting exactly the same, as much as they did a year before. Eventually, it was, hopefully, they'll go up. That was something that you were, you could step back and say, you know, what's the broader goal here? We, we like to say in my world that you incentivize things that you want people to do, as opposed to just celebrate things that are good. And the question I, I think we have is, do we need to incentivize new construction in the areas? I think we've all agreed, probably not, people want to build there to do things. But the question becomes, you know, are we doing enough to truly incentivize people to do the major behavs that'll improve? And I think frankly, the answer is probably not. I mean, based on how the CRA is doing, we've got a long track record of...
There hasn't been one either, and how many should just be at four?
Three, three real eventual, I mean.
Maybe one with a apartment.
Apartment.
Right, so, I mean, it isn't like there's been this broad swell of change in our view because of this.
Well, like I said, there's, there's nice to do, there's good to do, there's much to do. This runs between nice and good to do, they have to kind of throw some. And if someone's going to do their stuff because of this, there might be a very small fraction that might feel here to do the changes. But in most cases, the fact that they have good schools, safety, and all other stuff, is why people want to live here and make their house better, when it comes down to it, I think.
I think too, when you're thinking about the open lots, I mean, I would be in favor, you know, of scattered lots. You, I was talking to Eric, new homes are not being built in those old neighborhoods. And it's been 40 years, right Eric, since homes have been developed around the summit of our neighborhood? So if you take those homes and say they're 225, your taxes are approximately going to be $4,000 a year. So that's a complete new build. On a 225 house, $4,000 isn't huge, that, that was someplace else in the city, you would not want to do that, based on the revenue it would generate just in a pocket for other homes, you know, to expand, and keep making neighborhoods lively and vibrant. So I wouldn't want to scare, I don't think, nip any of those empty lots. I mean, it, it makes me, because some of the lots are already sold on the summit, it's strange, I think, three or maybe four are sold. Obviously, we don't have to do anything, it's just, you love seeing the growth there, and you wish that, like you said, maybe there could have been some supplement. You know, hey, your willing building would be in an old neighborhood, and you're going to add some occupancy to it, as opposed to a school. Could we have done something to encourage that? So I like that you're asking the question, the second, so if something maybe a little we could do, but isn't the 12 years, or... You know, because if you start to run the math, and you think four times eight is 32,000, approximately, maybe there is seven houses, 28,000, and 12 years, it does start to add up.
For, I'm, I'm just telling you, the school meeting that we had, to them it adds up.
Yeah.
And we have 20 lots that are open, and they could get, I don't know, 2,000 bucks a lot, let's say. That adds up. I understand that completely, when we're talking about, what is the number one reason why people move here? Our schools. Do we want to cannibalize that? We tend not to do that. So I mean, I'm just kind of throwing a couple of, we're, we're like two sides now, when we, when we look at it that way.
And on those, on those summit lots, they're getting about 93 bills in taxes. And of that, seven are going to us. The other, for most part, some are over in county, for most part, all those buildings are all in schools. So it hurts them much, much, much more exponentially, more than it does us.
But you just have to look at that whole number, in effect, I mean, out of a giant's watch, and then you say, okay, this is like this, or to start nipping, it just gets very small. Being the one that can grow from laws and courts.
We have the ability to do anything we want for the best of this community. So we can do any of this stuff, and change it in two years if it's not working, that's the beauty. And if we want to carve out every, every open lot, I'm not saying to do this, but if we wanted to carve that out, because we feel it strongly, this is our time to do that kind of thing. Because we feel very strongly that this, we don't want new things. I mean, I'm not saying, I'm just saying, let's start thinking what we want was best for the future, as best.
But it can't just be for the schools also, it could be about community.
No, no, it's just, I'm not agreeing that way.
So that is one segment, but then you have to look at, but you have to bigger picture in the whole, and how does that affect people? I mean, if people want to come anywhere in, then they're our house. So what is that highest limit? Is it a new build, or is it that one house in the old rustic neighborhood, you know, that encourages, sort of, it pay that money?
I agree with everything you said. I mean, I, I would, personally, if, if it was going to be reviewed every five to 10 years, I would include Arrowhead. But the fact that if we're going to look at this every two years, okay with that. What happened? John?
Uh, no comment.
Alright, so for our agenda, are we meeting next week?
Yes.
For first reading, we'll amend it, obviously, on the floor, because I've already put a piece on the floor, and then we'll go from there. So I have a new map made up, a couple of new little things added into the recording of the ordinance, and give it its first reading, and then we'll wait to hear back. As far as, one question is, teardowns and rebuilds, would it include that? And if or could include a decreased amount of new build in scattered lots? Maybe not this time, but maybe in two years if we decide. Just information that we have on the board.
Also, the legs.
Yeah, the legs, we're affected. Is our bottom line affected here for a road, or EMS, or our notes? You're, you're going to check it out. Because I came, I brought that up to see everything, so.
First of all, I think the question, I think we're locked into terms, basically.
Well, that's, that's even a check, we're locked into terms. We're locked into years, we're locked into 15 years, we're locked into that due state, right? You're looking at the...
Okay. Terms and percentage.
Right.
Okay.
Those are the bigger issues.
Good discussion, thanks.
Alright.
Alright. Next up, we're going to throw the legs, Sheriff and Mark.
Mark, I'm going to pass this to you, because I, I know this was something you were interested in, I would say that it was kind of the master plan.
It's part of the master plan, when we met, you know, for, for two months, right, Marshall, we've met many. One of the top things is that why are we called the Dogwood Tag? And that, and I've been here all the love time, I still, people ask me that, I think, when I'm here. So during the master plan, one of the things is to find our identity, and our identity is not a Dogwood city. There are very few Dogwoods that blew two, two weeks out of the year. Does that really represent us? And in our meetings with the master plan folks, no, they're very high, very strong, you know, we just want to be North Camp. We want to be who we are, we want to be classy who we are, our school here, we don't really want to be known as a tagline of the Dogwood City. And, and, and I know we brought this up, oh, maybe a year or two ago, and we didn't, we should, but as we, like, re-visited the master plan, it's right out front there, that's one of the first things that the tolls should do. That's the people that created this thing, is to kind of get rid of the Dogwood, and make no tagline at all, just we are North Camp, type thing. So what I'd like to do is take that out of, I think that Mary Beth had something that sent us, that said that it was, what was it, it was like a resolution or something?
1963.
1963. And I just, I saw something recently in the paper, too, I think it was a repository, that Dogwood City, and it's kind of a different, that's not us. Why are we, why are we even continuing to call that? So I'm suggesting that we follow the master plan and eliminate the tagline of the Dogwood City from any of our, our documents, and, and just be North Camp. So that's really where I stand at this point. Any discussion? Anybody agree or disagree? Oh, good point, Dan. I think we've tried to do that in many of, you know, we've got rid of all the signs for one, and that's on Pittsburgh Road. I'd like to put that taken out. The Rotary Club?
Alright.
Alright, maybe we have three now. Okay, you're not taking that right now.
Get it out.
And, see, Rotary is the good career. On Rotary, the park, they have the Dogwood, and I talked to Ben Wheeler, and they're, they're funny to take that and redo that. And he says that's not a problem. And then I think our police badges have that on there, if I'm not mistaken, and he's doing a badge. Yeah. So it's patch.
Patch over.
So they're becoming a patch.
So, so those are, I know, might be something else, you know, we can take a look at.
What about the pool?
What about the pool?
We still have Dogwood, we still have Dogwood Park, and Dogwood Park, we can dog.
So that's not a, a difference. So any, any, that's certainly, I'm glad you brought that up, but the only thing I see that's any change, that I see left,
I'll just say to the record, if you gave us a gun, why would you do it? Why do you want to remove it? We had a new pool, we do, I was, some of us were, we were too young. You know, they still have Dogwoods, and I said, well, this is something that must have been with the master plan. Well, that's all, I did, I did get questioned about it, so, just so you know. I mean, I didn't have 30 calls on it, but some of my neighbors, you know, they still have Dogwoods in New York, because they remembered that in the 60s, so, to be fair, that is the history.
And let's, let's make this clear, this isn't Mark, this is, this is the master plan. Mark's just trying to guide us towards the master plan, okay? So don't have those 30 people call me anyway. I'll explain exactly what I just said.
What's your other, what's your other?
My universe. It's 4-0. So, any other questions? Good point, though. You're always going to be solid.
Well, that's okay, if, if the private extra center is very strong, so I mean, they're good.
Change is...
It's the future we're looking at.
But man, the question is, is it effective, is it really doing it?
No, I understand.
It doesn't require community to, or feel, people want to talk about the Dogwood City, say, a promoting game.
Right. I think at the time, 50 years ago, sixty years, a group talking about what's our ambition, North Camp, and they probably passed out a lot of Dogwood trees, or purchased them, and that was a big thing. I mean, to be fair, let's go back in time and try and add it. And we, that theme was somewhat relative, relative for a while. But like you said, we've changed, I think we've done a great job aggressively, we're all in the city, and it's okay, you know? It's not hurt feelings, it'll do the process, you know?
And, you know, some of the advertising that we've done over the years, if you get online, you know, things open even over at the airport, was about a burden on them.
No, basically, yeah, that's been a...
And they did a great job, back when that was, you know, the thing, I'm not cutting that down anyways. But now, where I look to the picture of who we are, and, and we want people to come into North Camp, so. Okay, that's all I got, anything else?
Make sure there isn't a B P here, and we rented space about a long time ago, we remember, we did that, we, we, our administrator, we did rent space at the airport all those years ago, and I don't remember what our, I think it almost didn't.
Did?
Hopefully, they'll have anything at the airport.
No, I was taking down.
I assume, but you never know, they all have themselves, you know?
It's nothing we're paying for, so.
Yes, I realize that. Okay.
That's all I got, and there's, so that's your chair, if you're running, put that on.
Sure.
Yeah. Next up, one has a property here, the...
I have to turn over to you, Mr. Mark.
Alright. Oh, passing out of here, a, an overall, a big sheet, a piece of overall view of, of, of...
Each table or...
Right. What's going to contribute here? And I know it's, it's hard to see, so, I have it going up here on the...
I like four years of this thing.
So the, the overall project, just, uh... On this project here, it's basically starting from Walsh Avenue, adding side walls from there. And then running in, you know, it's the only way to... Mark, right, okay. You can see where the three, you know, three lanes are. And you have return lane here, like, the existing signal, it goes into the plaza, into Washington Square, and into Walsh, call it, University. The, the turn lane is going to remain the same, but you're going to put in a center aisle. And what, and then the other hand out there is... Do you have it in there? Right, now this is not East Maple. You can see here, you know, there's basically six lanes there, East Maple's only three lanes. This is just a concept for a different project in a different city. But what we're looking at in the green, in, in this, right, you know, that, that picture, is, is this, basically. You know, center aisle, concrete, it could be landscape, you put, uh... You know, center aisle, concrete, it can be landscape, you can put, like, multi-posts in the middle, you can put banners that say the Dogwood City, whatever. You can see, you know, intersections in the background here that, you know, has the brick crosswalks. And then however you wanted to diverge, you know, the streets games along the side, you know, with some brick accents and orange bell street lights and so forth. So what we're doing, in this project that is before us this evening, is. Is this west gate right here. Here's the historic, move the historical building here. And the entrance into that, they're relocating that, they're moving that over to this area, right here. I use a pointer, but it doesn't work on the screen.
You remember it from where, where?
From where the entrance drive into the Hoover Park, the historical building here. Moving the driveway from there, they're gonna close off that driveway, move it over to this intersection right here.
Yeah, so the driveway.
Just, just the entrance. The parking lot and the driveway will stay there, but just the entrance going in will be blocked. And then, you know, we're planning a brick and concrete crosswalk here. Excuse me. And as I mentioned before, we're not going to put up the traffic signals, but it'll be set up for traffic signals in the future, with head crossings and so forth. Other aspects of the project is here at the center gate, it's primarily a pedestrian crossing. Now, in this area, right, you can see the curves are moving right in here. That's where the new building is planned. And.
Right here is where the building starts.
Right.
Oh, yeah, and they just put the sign up.
Yes. And this is the, you know, preliminary draft of what the building would look like. And that, you know, intersection that they put in, they showed it all brick, but we were doing the brick and concrete. It'd be primarily a crosswalk, a pedestrian crossing.
We also.
No, no, gentle. Also, with the median, with the gray area of the median, that will redirect the pedestrian traffic to the crosswalk.
Right, yeah.
So it acts a, you know, it acts a nice aesthetic barrier, but also a physical barrier, so you can't.
Run across.
Run across. Right.
What about, one of the concerns that people that articulated was making sure that the turn lanes were going to be big enough to handle all the traffic so that people could back up in there regularly?
Right. There, you know, there may be times, you know, if Walsh decides to put, you know, a football stadium on the, on the north side there, and that's where their games are going to be, and somehow, you know, they attract five thousand people to a game, or ten thousand or more, yeah, I mean, no matter what we do there, it's going to back up. You're gonna have to have, you know, assistance getting people in and out. But on a regular basis, you know, the turn lanes will be, the length of the turn lanes aren't out, and there's not a problem with that.
Jim, I know that's where most of the infrastructure is occurring. When you go further east towards Market? We still have that, that green buffer, median strip is going to be more of a little tree area or a bush area, is that correct?
Right.
The next one there?
Yeah, this.
And like you said, the sidewalks will be wide, not one side, it'd be, what, ten feet?
We're not going to get into the sidewalk at this time.
It's just that way it's not straight, isn't it?
Right, it's just that one intersection is this here. The future.
Future's gonna be more looking at that whole concept than what needs to be marked.
Correct.
Now?
ODOT, with their forty-three project, is connecting the sidewalks from Route forty-three to this intersection here.
Okay.
Signalized intersection.
Now, what's happening as far as, I know, different times of days, it's a nightmare going east. Follow across, go along, reach Maple East, travel some. They coordinate that whole thing to be a better thoroughfare area to get the traffic out.
Right, you're adding a right turn lane.
This is that Market Niner staying on the.
On the Maple. Coming to Market from East Maple, there'll be a right turn lane.
A right turn lane is not one down, it'll be a.
Correct. True lane and a left turn lane.
Okay, so it's.
Right.
And, I mean, you think about it, too, Market would have to be four lanes. So people turn and ride, turn and lap, they're gonna have two lanes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Hey, so is there any way of getting more roadway or are there always enough through lanes?
Right now, I don't think there's a need for, for more lanes. I think, you know, the main lanes, main line is decent. Yeah, yes, attorney moving concerns there at forty-three.
So let's expand forty-three, when that project happens, it'll be quicker movement around the corner, so we don't have as much backup.
Right.
I don't think they want this to be a highway, neither do we. We want to be able to let kids cross. I mean, because, you know, we're talking about maintenance view right now, you know, we want to bring it down, slow things down, that, that should be maintained at speeds. That's an area there, and rather, they still have to keep the speed limit down. The left district. So Jim, there's that, on the other one, you showed that boardwalk. Walsh is building that boardwalk, right? The, go back to, right there on the right.
Right. Yeah, every party, their, their plan when they build the new building here.
Okay.
And that's, you know, they're still developing that, what the concept is there. Previously, they said there would only be a few delivery trucks coming in there. We saw the original, or the preliminary concept of that building, they had maybe eight parking spaces there. So I, you know, how they integrate pedestrian and some vehicles there, you know, we're waiting to see that. You know, I, I let them know, you know, that was their concept, that's going to be a main pedestrian thoroughfare coming from the dormitories, crossing over to the, you know, the shopping area, and so they're gonna have to consider how they want to develop that. But I think it will be, you know, a brick and concrete pattern, and maybe safer for pedestrians and the few vehicles that will go in and out.
One follow, Jim. So the appropriation ordinance for that, we're going with two fifty to four ten, is that proposed traffic signal area that you're showing?
Just, just this one intersection here.
Okay.
And we're doing everything in the street to relocation of the driveway. Of course, we'll be in Walsh, because that's their driveway.
So that's a bit of a. So for the median strip too?
No, no median strips, that's future.
So that four hundred is just for that, that intersection?
That intersection, right.
Is that because the, they have labor to direct traffic or?
Automating is the maintenance of traffic. Yeah. They're hiring six nights, it's focused the contractor, and, you know, they're looking at possible ways of reducing the cost. But we have to award the contract based on what they did, but once we're into the contract, we can look at reducing the cost.
So the relocation of water lines, the retaining wall, tree removal, that's all included right along here now?
Well, nothing needs to be done from that's new. That's, that's for the future for these.
That's future too. Just that squared area they were looking at.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, we're looking at, you know, in the future, getting a sidewalk further to the east on the south side, because you have the tunnel there.
Correct.
You have to bring the sidewalk down, back towards the university, and then cross over, then back up towards the street. So that's, that's going to be a little bit of a challenge to get that sidewalk in. And then it's.
You did it?
Yeah, thank you. And then as Serena suggested, you know, looking at those sidewalks all the way into the city from Walsh, because it's LA U's, and improving it and installing it all the way on the south side also. We do have a bridge just a little bit to the, to the west, and crossing the stream there, that'll be a cost. But again, that's going to be a future and a different project altogether.
The stone bridge that Doug and I want, okay?
Is there any grants for like the bridging and different things like that, that you can get money for?
They're difficult to come by, but we'll look at them. I've already initiated that.
We need those little grant writers.
That's pretty good.
So the fact that it went up was because the closing of the street is not possible, which gives us the rundown on that.
Yeah. The maintenance of traffic, keeping traffic maintained or, yeah, flowing during construction. That is about, I think you're back, whatever you call it, about a hundred fifty thousand hiring employees for that, and it's just a part of the construction so forth. So, you know, we couldn't close the street down, it'd be cheaper, but we'd hear about it from the businesses.
Well, anyone who's been on Woodrow or now Tenth Street or Pittsburgh, you see how that traffic will at the expenses of having people out there and getting traffic flows. Two or three, or five, some drive people out there, make sure that.
If they work from twelve to six.
Yeah. They do want to serve.
Well, they do on highways. We've got a. We need to swing the show.
To the one money question. You know, right now, we have, what was it there? In municipal road fund. Two hundred thirty-three thousand municipal road funds available to us at this point. That's why we're wanting to go ahead and receive at this time. You know, if you want to wait a couple of years and see if we get, you know, funds for the entire project out there, you know, this cost will go down, the project itself, you know, we, you know, about one, one point five million for an overall project.
Well, even for the gray criteria, there is, we do some of it ourselves, it gets us more points towards the overall project cost. When you're, when you're a politician, municipalities, townships, whatever, if you put skin in the game, you're gonna get more costs, you're gonna get bored the rest of the project.
It's better for a cash flow overall.
Right. You have to look at the big.
Doing a little five, opposed to saying, okay, we're gonna do two million dollars one year, and then down that's an empty street, it's another list to pay. As opposed to two million still being able to pay a lot of rent this year, which is still a lot of time.
What is the building's like in that year for that building?
I'm not certain. We looked at some preliminary plans the other week, and I think we should go fundraising. I can't.
Other questions?
We got many bases, this will be all together, five bases, three bases?
It just depends on funding, you know? If we had all the money, we could do it all on one page, so, you know, we'll break it up, you know, we won't be getting it when we can.
I apologize, I go back to my page real quick.
Sure.
No. We never specifically talked about commercial. Right now, it's set at, the minimum is fifty thousand dollars, but the higher I go, the minimum is five thousand. So we want to stick, so commercial, right now, even both legislation is fifty thousand dollars. And in the other C R A's, it is as well, correct? I don't know off the top of my head. I don't know why it would have strayed from that, but at this point, the higher I go, it's five thousand. So we went back down to the higher wise code for, for residential. So it's twenty-five hundred, that's ten years, eight percent. And a commercial is currently written in the legislative, in our proposed fifty thousand for twelve years.
I think we have other tools if we really want to encourage commercial, uh, occupancy rates that help affect our mates.
Yeah, but for smaller businesses, they want to put a fifteen thousand dollar thing in to maybe update something. I'm just drawing that out.
See, even then, I'd still rather do not, you know, for three reasons. One, it doesn't work to schools, which is good. Two, it's a lot of technical leash, because we're, every year you're coming back and saying, have you complied? And it's usually also tied, it's a rev, it's age to their, it's a percentage of what new business they create. So we're never losing one, we're giving a percentage of what they create that they, that they have, and then we have a cost to pay. And I would figure that, but, you know.
Eric, do you have some comments?
We did not. March is referring to the section five B, and that, that's still referring to the lot. Section six is the one for industrial and commercial, and we haven't put an amount of.
So B is just, you're right, is dwellings containing more than two units? I take that back, and I apologize.
Because we're given, we have to worry everything.
So do we want that much, the thousand dollars? It's not commercial, I apologize, it's dwellings more than two units, so, all time.
So commercial's not included, isn't that?
Correct.
There's no one in that commercial actually. Well, I mean, yeah, we don't. We don't want to consent people to build multi-union.
Okay, so we better.
We're gonna do it here.
All right.
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
Right, also, I got a motion expected to a met the agenda to include, uh, personnel safety, as, 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 as an ordinance that. A lot of areas into a successor collective bar, you know, fire.
Some.
The fair say aye.
Aye.
Both same time, motion carries. Chair, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. Recently, we negotiated a new collective bargaining agreement with the firefighters, the MS Union. It's for a three-year term. It will begin January first. Includes salary increases at the first, second, and third years at one percent, two, and two. It also brought in this union, what the other unions have, paying for the healthcare premium increase, it came to eleven percent. And it removes a five hundred dollar stipend that was in there. So that was one of the things that collectively we wanted to do in all of our agreements, is to remove hidden, hidden payments that were in there. So that, that's been removed. And it's pretty much in line with what we've done with the other four that we've completed. We have two more that are outstanding, but we're really close, I think, within the next, probably two to four weeks, we should complete with water treatment and land in our street department. But this gives us the authority, the mayor, to enter into the contract on behalf of the city. We know all the terms and conditions. We're gonna probably go a little bit back and forth in some of the language with the union's attorney and myself, but essentially, we, we know what the broad strokes are.
All right, you have any questions?
Take that, that five hundred dollars, how much did that save the city by you, working that negotiation?
Cross corridor.
Cross corridor.
Well, it, it depends. It, the stipend was included in bargaining, and bargaining depends on how many meetings we have. And unfortunately, in that one, we had perhaps the maximum that we could, because we negotiated, I think, three times, and then the union declared that we ran an impasse and requested fact-finding, which brings in someone from the state employment relations board that will in, someone with PhD in economist that will come in and whose side presents. And the fact-finder makes recommendations. And then from those recommendations, either side can reject it, and the union did, because they felt that recommendations were too heavily weighted in the city's favor. They asked then for a conciliator, and the conciliator is just like fact-finding, except a conciliator, the decision, if you're. The decision, if you're working with safety forces, and since it was fire, and EMS that apply, once the conciliator makes a decision, that's what will be implemented, and the city is then bound by that. However, you're permitted to negotiate during conciliation. There's a little bit of back and forth, they separate the parties, and so that's what we were able to do. The, the difference is, the conciliator, uh, was probably a little more tied. If you would look at the, the comments and things that were presented, they were a little more favorable towards the, the union in some of those issues, but we continued back and forth throughout the day. So, as far as the, the cost savings, it's, it depends on if you outsource it for an attorney, you're going to pay one sixty to two hundred and fifty dollars an hour for every hour that you're involved. And conciliation was a day, plus probably three or four days of preparation, and then times that by the number of times that you met. A lot. But I, I calculated with a lot. Sometimes it will be between fifteen and twenty thousand. For, for you.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Yeah, this chair. Yeah, will be on next week, uh, under emergency?
Yes. Yeah, they don't give us an opportunity to say as, as quickly as you can, so that's why we asked to amend the, the report.
What's that? Okay, at this time, I will, uh, accept the motion of the second, the adjournment, the second intention. Hold on, because the meeting will be called. Uh, consider the employment of a, employee, the session will not be open until called. So, like, say aye. Aye. Both same sign. I don't know, unless we drop the ceiling.
What's that?
Unless we drop, unless we drop the ceiling.
Or put some kind of, uh, block if you're here or something.
Even those little space to...
It would take some big bucks.